All right, I'm calling to order the Stevens-Purnia Public School Board, a regular school board meeting for Monday, August 25th. Please have a roll call and verification of a forum.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Ebel.
Here.
Ms. Earler.
Here.
Vaxton. Mr. Kokonoski.
Um, he's excused.
Mr. Presley.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Sherrick.
Here.
Ms. Totten.
Here.
Eight members present, we have a forum.
We need to approve the agenda.
Yep.
Actually, I was going to tell you that 6B needs to be pulled out of the consent. And then D and E are not listed, so we can't discuss those. So otherwise, I was going to pull out E. But seeing as they're not on the agenda, we won't be discussing them anyways.
D and E where?
On the agenda.
C, D, and E?
No, C's on there.
I meant 6.
On 6, under the consent agenda, we have A, B, and C. D and E are not listed, which means we can't do them because they're not on the agenda.
Your agenda page.
Okay.
This agenda page?
Yeah. So 6D and 6...
You'd like 6B pulled out?
Yes, please.
Just to be voted on separately?
What happened to the other two?
Yes, please.
Okay, yep, no problem.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
These last two cannot be voted on?
They're not listed on the agenda, but they're listed in the packet on the consent topic.
But they're not listed on the agenda. But they're not listed on the agenda. And you can't add to the agenda.
You would know more about that than I do.
I mean, it's listed as part of the consent agenda, but it's not an itemized item on the actual agenda.
And that's, we just went through that things need to be listed, like when someone wants to talk, the superintendent's report, all of that stuff needs to be listed on the agenda. Correct?
Why am I not seeing them anywhere? Are they under the consent?
Yeah, they're on the consent agenda, but they're not on the master agenda.
Correct.
Is there something we should do about consensus if we agree to it?
No, we could move to put it on Wednesdays, do a revision to Wednesdays, and have a small consent agenda on Wednesday's open session.
Okay. Do you need... I think we need to do that because these both need to be in, yes.
Okay.
If they're on the consent already...
But it's not itemized in, on the agenda.
But if you pull them off the consent agenda, aren't you voting on them separately?
No, we're not pulling them off. They're not on the agenda.
But they're on the consent agenda. You can pull them off the consent agenda.
I see what you're saying.
And then they become something that you could vote on.
No, because they're not on the agenda. We just went through that, remember, how we have to list everything we're going to talk about? Everything has to be on the agenda.
It would work if we did it on Wednesday.
Okay. It'll be on Wednesday. Yes.
Also, I would like to remove the closed session, again, for our discussion and for what we were told from the lawyers at our discussion at our last workshop. Our closed session was going to be listed. I was told that our items were going to be listed from now on per what the lawyer requested. And that's why, at the last workshop, of why things were announced for us to go into closed session. So I would like to pull that whole closed session, since the items aren't listed of what we're going to speak about.
How are they not listed? It says specifically contract negotiations. It lists the individual groups and specifically the review of the employment.
I was told at the last workshop that they were going to have like a definition or an explanation of what we are going in for each item.
I think this stems back to at the workshop. It was listed that we were going into closed session specifically for the review and employment of the superintendent. And we had been told at the prior meeting that what we were going in there for was to review the summary that the president and the vice president were going over again for the superintendent's review. Then, what ended up happening is one board member went to the president. We didn't follow policy. The president and vice president didn't set the agenda. The exact same wording is being used here. So we went in to discuss whether or not our decision that had previously been decided by the board, whether or not we were going to stand by that decision. And so if we're discussing that again, it was already decided, even though we didn't take action, which I emailed Angel about. We need to let the public know what action we took, even the fact that no action is action. And we didn't do that. So I think the concern is, when we say it so general like this, the public needs to know what it is instead of the board members.
From a legal perspective, this is a legal notice. I mean, this is an appropriate notice, and it has sufficient information.
So then...
I'm not...
Right, right.
But the notice here is an adequate notice to allow us to go into closed session.
Okay. So then my question is, is last time we went into closed session, why did we have to have an explanation of what we were going into closed session for? And we were told that the lawyer said we needed explanation to go into closed session. And that's how it was going to be done from now on. Because otherwise, what we went into closed session for last time should have been a special session, because it wasn't on. It's not what the intent was for.
I asked if I could speak to an item under what was, under that statute. Angel had spoken to the lawyer and called me and said, "If you want to speak to this under that, that specific, you need to..." This is specific to what we're going to be talking to. And I needed to, in other words, I needed to specify under that what I was talking about.
So instead of calling a special session, you went that route?
No, I just asked, how do I do that? Do I need to put a different statute out there, or is that the correct one? She spoke with the lawyer and called and said, "This is what you need to do." If this is accurate, and it is, to what we're going to be speaking about, and it falls under those, I don't know why you would want to do something different.
How is it different than last time?
We're not talking about...
I can't explain it to you until we're in closed session. So that's all I can say. If you want it pulled, we can take a vote on that. Or if you want to vote no, that's also fine.
So if we want something on the agenda, we don't have to follow our own policy? Is that what you're saying?
That is not what I'm saying.
So are we going to be going hashing through the same thing as we did at the last workshop in regards to...
We are not.
See, and I thought that was discussion. I thought we weren't supposed to leave this so general. We were listing our items from now on. That's how I took it. And when I talked to Meg that night, too, that's the information that I got, is that, well, we don't have, we never had it listed before. Well, now we're going to, because the lawyer said so.
Closed session always has to stay fairly generic because of the nature of closed session information. In open session, he's very clear that we need to be more specific. So I'm not sure if we're mixing conversations. Closed session is probably never going to be more specific than this.
So if I want to speak to something specifically, let's say about the superintendent, I have to announce it now that I want to speak to, and with the approval of the board, I want to speak to, let's say, the evaluation. Even though it's not really clear on here, I need to let everybody know and the public know that's what I want to talk about in closed session. That's what happened in the workshop, if I understand correctly.
I'll tell you what. If this would make it easier, when Mike is here on Wednesday, we can ask him to explain it, because I'm not being clear enough for you to understand what I did. And it's obviously frustrating you, which is not my intent. So let's ask him while he's here.
Can we remove the closed session, then?
We can, you can request that, and we will take a vote on it.
I will request to remove the closed session until further notice from the lawyer.
Okay. So we...
Second.
Just a clarification, does that include the negotiations or the superintendent?
I would have to say the whole thing, if it's how I explain. I mean, we have Wednesday, it's two days away. I mean, I would like to get the negotiation started and on the way, but I don't think two days after the months that they've been waiting. I misunderstood. I thought it was supposed to be all listed, what we're going in the closed session with somewhat of an explanation. That's why Ms. Scott did the whole thing at Spash that day. So I'm asking to remove the whole thing until Wednesday.
Okay. And does this include what you're asking, or for B to be pulled, or should that be separate?
That's separate. That's automatic in our policy.
All right. Any further discussion? Then a roll call vote, please. Would you please read the motion so people know exactly what they're voting?
Motion to remove closed session from tonight's agenda. Yep, ready?
Correct.
Ms. Baker.
No.
Mr. Ebel.
No.
Ms. Earler.
No.
Ms. Vaxton.
No.
Mr. Presley.
No.
Ms. Scott.
No.
Ms. Sherrick.
Of course.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Motion fails, seven to two.
Six to two.
Six to two.
All right, so the minutes are pulled. Now we need someone to approve the agenda.
Move approval. I'll second that.
With the change.
Okay.
The change to six, or to the consent agenda.
Yeah, she's just pulling out.
Means that 6B will be pulled and voted on separately.
6D.
And we will not discuss D and E.
And D and E are not on there.
They're not on there.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Vaxton.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
No.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to one.
Okay. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, we have public comments, and we have two people signed up at this point. Thor Backus is first, and you have five minutes.
Do you need everyone?
Do you need me?
I promised I'd be done in three, so I'm going to go for three. Is this thing on? My name is Thor Backus. I am the staff representative for AFSMI Council 40. I represent the local 309 employees here at the district. I'd like to speak to two items. First, the idea of restoring in-house custodial staff. I sent some correspondence on this already. If you did not receive it, I have extra copies here. If you wouldn't mind sharing that, I greatly appreciate it. Also, I'd like to discuss the issue of upcoming wage negotiations between AFSMI Local 309 and the district. And I also recently sent correspondence on that issue. And I have copies here in case you didn't see that. First, to the issue of outside workers. District made a choice a number of years ago to hire outside employment with the likely goal of managing the district's bottom line, of course. There are other less apparent costs associated with using outside workers, and some of those have raised some concerns. Lack of familiarity with outside workers is a safety concern. High turnover of those workers adds further to the concerns about familiarity, trust, and the quality of work. We've had 225 contract workers come and go since that contract was signed a number of years ago. Now, problems with outside workers, work quality is well documented. I believe leadership of the local union has shared that with you. If you would like to see some of that documentation, we're more than happy to share that. Now, I do want to talk about alternatives. Restoring in-house employees to fill all custodial positions will address two key priorities of the board: improve work quality and school safety. And we provide the following alternatives for consideration. To consider a housekeeper position. This position would start at a much lower rate than the custodian position now. To ease the transition, we propose the district would hire 10 new in-house employees in the first year, and then additional employees after that. So it wouldn't be a shock to the way the system's working now. We also propose that the wages would be improved through base wage negotiations, and these employees would be eligible for some benefits. I think there are going to be some more discussions on this, and we definitely welcome those future discussions, and look forward to that. With regard to upcoming negotiations, I'll start out with a short summary. Custodian and maintenance employees were denied pay boosts in 2011 and '12, as well as '12 and '13. At the same time, most other district employees were fairly provided a wage boost. Local 309 agreed to a wage freeze in '10 and '11. At the end of the day, quite simply put, these employees have not seen a pay increase in their wages for over five years. I did a little research on staff that I work with, and I asked everybody, "Do you know of any public sector unit in Wisconsin, county, city, school district, that has not seen a pay raise in five years?" And the answer is no. No one else has seen that. And so we're in a very unique situation here. At the time of their last increase, custodians were about even or a little ahead of nearby comparable school districts, their peers. Now they're about a dollar behind, on average. So they're slipping. I did get a message from Flo late last week that she's going to call me tomorrow. We're going to set up some negotiating dates. I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of background on the biggest issue, I think, is the five years of having a wage freeze. It's been a long time. So I won't go through the details on what we're proposing. It's on the information I sent you. And I look forward to getting back to the table in September. How'd I do on time?
Good. I think that's a win.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Reed?
Reed Rush. Hello. It seems like the only time this board is concerned with time and procedure is when the public speaks. Because tonight, you started the meeting late, and it didn't seem to faze anybody. In addition, the way you agenda your meetings, this one last week, Tuesday, which was supposedly a workshop, was a total disaster. That's not reflected anywhere in your minutes, that the public would know what a disaster that was, how you had it, how you had it, agended for the high school auditorium. And by mistake, I came here and I saw a mass exodus of people leaving this place, heading over, then I thought, oh, yeah, it's at Spash. So then I go to Spash, then I went to the, and when I walk in there, I see a couple of board members who were coming. This is already about 10:00, 7:00, when the meeting was supposed to start 6:30, which I figured I'd be going to be late at a meeting. Then I go to the restroom there at Spash. Then I come back out, I start jerking on the doors of the auditorium. I got it listed here, auditorium. Then I decided to take a hike. I said, "I knew, I seen some school board members. Where are they?" And they got another way into the auditorium. So I walked down the hallway, hey, in the cafeteria. That's where you had your meeting. That wasn't how it was agended. You know, so you should have just canceled the meeting. It was so poor. And there should be consequences. They're not here. Oh, somebody screwed up. Well, if somebody screwed up, that was a pretty big screw-up. What are the consequences of that? Anywhere else? Gone. Here? Okay. Now, you brought up this agenda aspect, which you didn't bring up, Ms. Totten, was the fact is, what you went into closed session for, I was one of the few people, by the way, once again, who attended that meeting, that workshop meeting, that had this little closed session tacked onto it. And when it became kind of problematic that, you know, it wouldn't be a closed session, Christine Scott got all excited. Oh, what are we going to talk about?
Okay, that's crossing some lines.
Why?
You're mocking one of the board members. It's not okay.
Oh, I'm mocking. Okay. Christine Scott says, geez, when are we going to talk about this, you know, what the 26 who think they're who wants to keep Attila Winiger? We got to talk about this. The president says, geez, I talked to the attorney, and he says, "This is how we bring it back," which brings into a conclusion, how could you talk to the attorney? Your own rules said that only the superintendent can talk to the attorney. Then you have the decision, that's what you were going, you were going into closed session for that reason. Okay? Mr. Presley says, "We've already decided that." But so that would lead one to believe that he wasn't part of setting the agenda. So once again, that was probably illegitally done. You didn't even follow your rules at that time. But don't tell me you guys went into closed session and didn't make some type of decision. Because it was really important, because during your meeting, which you had beforehand, Finner says that until the superintendent issue is finalized, your idea of a superintendent or a, you know, of an office of superintendent won't fly, because everyone will still be concerned if he still remains here. So that was very generic. So don't tell me you went into closed session and didn't come up with something. And you brought up tonight that you alluded to something. I believe you came up with a decision. And you people use closed sessions to hide your votes and your ideas from the public. And the public's got to know how you people are voting on these matters, because we got election coming up. And people have made promises about the superintendent of the schools. So what did you decide in closed session? And once again, it's back on the agenda again tonight, the same way it was... So I assume you guys come up with something. And if you voted not to do anything, or consensus, or agree to, that is a vote, because in other words, what stands is the fact that the superintendent, you aren't going to address the fact that he resigned. Important. He isn't coming back. Important. No? You know what you did in closed session. You should have come back in open session and decided, we're going to talk about it again. We decided this. But something happened in closed session. Because, believe me, I don't believe Christine Scott and the fact that you said you specifically were going in for that reason, that you didn't talk about that in closed session. And I believe that's an abuse. I believe you people have broken the law here by not going into open session and deciding what I'm assuming you decided in closed session. And only you people know for sure. So hopefully, one of you guys will come clean.
Thank you, Reed. All right, we are now on to the consent agenda, which is number six, letters A and C. I need a motion to approve, please.
Move to approve. The consent agenda, A and C items.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion on A and C?
Can you just include the revised 6C? Because we have a revised one at our desk, not the one that was enclosed in our packet.
Right. And item C would be the revised that was at our desk.
And Trish, will you the second?
Oh, yes, yes, I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Earler?
Aye.
Ms. Vaxton?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, zero.
All right, now we have consent agenda item 6B, which Reed has asked to speak to.
Can I speak first?
I think the public goes first, if I remember correctly.
Okay, to take off from where I was before, the minutes are inadequate. You had a workshop. That's what that was. It is not scheduled, was not scheduled as a meeting, though you guys have it kind of as a meeting. It was a workshop that you had. Finner talked about a lot of stuff. And maybe you don't like, some of you don't like Finner now, but you were all gung ho about getting the guy when you thought that when he was going to fix your dysfunctionality. He's charging 500 bucks, by the way, now. So you better, you know, there's nothing in here about what he talked about. And what was important was, and I, you know, I was there, and I'm listening to this, and you, the president asked for, hey, when you talked about the office of superintendent, he says to you, you know, if the press gets a hold of this and portrays it wrong, this isn't going to go good. You asked, "Could you give me an outline of what this is?" Okay? I don't see that in here. And what do we see? The press, jumping all over it. Jumping all over this thing, portraying this as if you're going to go without a superintendent. You know, because that wasn't there. So they must have got their stuff from the journal. But the journal was there. So they follow up on Saturday with no case for, no super scheme. So they portray this. The journal is the worst one here, who's portraying this as you guys are going into this without a superintendent and all this, when in fact, they know better, because Nate Fine was there. One of the few people that was, taking all this stuff. And he, he may not be one of editorial writers, but where did they get their information from? They weren't there. The meeting wasn't recorded like it should be, so the public would know. So what's going on here? Because then you ask, oh, geez, and then they say, "Give us an example of a school district other than Amro." Hey, I found you one. Bigger than, here, get out of the state of Wisconsin, you know, Colorado Springs, you know, Colorado, Falcon 49 school district, 18,000 population. I got all the email stuff. They talk to me all day, then they're calling me, you know, big school district. They got, what do they call it? The three chief model, you know, everything else? The guy that kind of runs the show, they speak at national conferences. So don't tell me, you know, they, there are people that got new innovative ideas, if you people just look around, okay? So you want one bigger than Amro? They got one here. In fact, one of the people that called me, Mr. Winiger, knew you. Dale Black or somebody, Randy Black, right, some small world. He's like, "Attila Winiger, I worked on him in Elk Park, Illinois." This is from the Colorado Association of School Board. What I'm getting at is, when you guys want to, you're all elaborating on minutes. Here, and another thing, sometimes you go with minutes, I mean, you know, time, like 01 into the meeting, which is hard to figure, because the meeting started at 7:00, it's not 6:30, and then you go with time. Your minutes are not consistent or inadequate. The public isn't being given the full scoop. And this superintendent, this office of superintendent is not being portrayed accurately in the press. So the public, how in the heck is the public going to come here and talk about it when it's being portrayed? You asked for something, doesn't say that. Did you ever get anything? Are you making a statement to the public of what? An office of superintendent? They never said you were going to go, that, Finner said, "You're not going to go without a superintendent. You're going to go with a group of people." And it's been done. It's bigger school districts than point. I'll get you that information. But what good is it going to do when the public doesn't know? That's what's wrong here. And shame on you, school board members. And then you're going to decide on the 19th, no, we're going to go back to our old way. We're going to do it like we did before. History will repeat itself. Why would it be any different the next time you do it? The elitists are going to pick the superintendent of schools. Did you read the open letters? Do you people read the newspaper? It was a really good open letter from a business leader in there. Both papers, by the way. You know, this is really frustrating. Hardly anybody shows up at these meetings. You know, where does the public going to learn this kind of stuff? This is important things, don't you think? And to be innovative, oh, I hear from the school board, but when you're running for election, let's be innovative. Well, as soon as you get elected, some of you got elected, saying things that you're not doing now, and that's why the closed session stuff, this stuff's gotta stop. You already, I, I know you guys came up with something. I don't see anybody shaking their head or like a bunch of statues here, ready to talk. You, you, you are meeting too much, you are in violation. These rules were made for the public, for, for honesty, and that's not being done here.
Lisa?
Um, okay, first of all, um, on page one of one, it does say that it's a regular school board meeting and it was actually a workshop, so that needs to be corrected. And I, um, agree with Reed, we have a responsibility to make the public aware of what took place in closed session. The fact that we chose not to act on, um, what Christina Scott brought forward about the 26 people is action, and I believe that needs to be reflected in the minutes. We didn't come back out and take a vote, which we should've done. So it needs, we need to be straight up with the people, with the public, that the board had accepted the resignation months before. Do we have to remove?
Is there something you wanna correct in the minutes?
Yeah, I wanted it added.
Okay.
Absolutely, I want it added. The consent, what we agreed to do.
Because I don't believe we can put it in there because we didn't go back into open and do it. That would be publishing or providing closed session information in public.
So then, how do we rectify what we did? By not letting the public know.
My, my comment would be that it's, it's very common for there to be a closed session, in fact, there will be tonight, where we will go into closed session and we, as a board, will discuss the matters that are appropriate to be discussed under closed session, and we will come out of closed session into open and we will take no action.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's very common.
Yes.
And so ultimately, there was no action taken at the last meeting in open session, and that's what the minutes reflect.
And now, I would agree with you, when we're doing negotiations and stuff, we, we are not taking action. But our choosing not to take action was action. Now, when the, the negotiation stuff, there's no need to come back into open session. I asked Angel to contact the attorney and find out if I was correct or not. Did you do that?
I did.
And the attorney said?
We'll talk about it in closed session. That's what he told me.
Talk about it in closed session, whether or not we're gonna let the public know, be open and honest. So the public won't know until, well, then let's have the, the minutes ready on Wednesday as long as we're having another meeting so that they can know what we decided. I mean, they shouldn't have to wait another two weeks or four weeks to know because unfortunately, Reed is right. As long as people think there's a chance that our superintendent could come back, they're not gonna be receptive to the whole superintendent, uh, office, which is having multiple superintendents. And Dale told us that right out, that that needed to be handled right away.
My job as the president is to make sure that the board is not blindsided. Therefore, there is nothing, I can do in open session until we've had an opportunity to discuss it in closed session, which is why it's on the closed session agenda. Then we can discuss it in open.
So you didn't consider it blindsiding us last meeting, discussing this in closed session?
I did not. Not at all.
Well, if the public's smart enough to realize there was no action taken, you'll know what action was taken.
Do you want anything specific that you want said about this, or do you just want it pulled and re-voted on on Wednesday?
I want it pulled and re-voted on, because I want.
I'm sorry, did we say we were gonna take a vote on that?
We will. I'm just asking for clarification.
A vote on what?
On what was done in closed session? No. To having be removed and approved on Wednesday with additions. That's what we're voting on.
If there's gonna be additions?
The board needs to decide there are gonna be additions.
Same, yeah.
I, I don't believe that we can pull minutes. We had the meeting last week, and the issue in front of us is whether the minutes in front of us are reflective of what occurred.
Correct or not?
So that's what the issue in front of us is.
Correct.
We, we do, we, we aren't able to add something to these minutes that happened subsequent to them, to this set of minutes. If, if, if there is something that is done in this meeting later, or in the meeting on Wednesday?
It would be a part of tonight's minutes.
That would be a part of, no, that would be a part of minutes with respect to when, when that occurred.
You are correct.
But what we're being asked to do right now is approve the minutes of what occurred last week.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I would like to see a little bit more clarification in the presentation. Because when you're reading this, and I really wish, after he spoke and we all said he spoke very well and explained it, both pros and cons to both concepts, I wish we would've taped it. I really, because none of us, we've all said, none of us can say the exact wordings. I would like us to, the presentation on the pros and cons, if nothing else, we can list that, get it a little bit more in depth, so we can go back and recall that, because we don't have any videotape to do it. I would like to see a little bit more information put in there, on a workshop, since they're not taped, versus a regular meeting. And also, my question is gonna be for Meg, when you decide, said earlier, is when we go into closed session, we discuss things. Very seldom do we make a vote on things. Discussion, correct. But I did try to get us to come out and, and vote on our, uh, make a motion to make it clear.
Okay, for time's sake, what, what is it you want us to do with this right now, Lisa? What, do you have a motion you wanna make?
Well, to change the wording of meeting to workshop, to reflect that it was actually a workshop and not a meeting. And, um, Meg is right, we didn't take the vote in open session, so, um, even though we should've, it wasn't in there, so I don't, I don't believe we handled the meeting appropriately. And I believe it is important to put in there the pros and cons that Dale listed, and he said he'd get to you for the workshop, for clarity to the public.
Okay, so you want the word changed to workshop, and you want a listing of the pros and cons when Dale sends them?
Yes, included.
That's what the motion is? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I ask a question for clarification?
Yes.
Was there a motion to approve the minutes as they are? No?
No. This one was pulled out.
Any further?
Nope. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
So you want us to advance approve the minutes that we haven't seen? Is that right?
Oh, we should have these brought back.
For the pros and cons, we don't know.
Right, so no, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate, no.
Okay, so should we just reflect?
Yes, and hold off on the approving until those are incorporated. I believe you're right.
Okay.
So you need to withdraw that? Are you gonna correct it?
Oh, yeah, I'll withdraw it. So we're gonna?
And bring it back for approval with the pros and cons added, and the, um, meeting changed to workshop to accurately reflect what happened.
Amy? In regards to the format, I understand having the, like, an additional attachment that we can put on the website with, um, sometimes when we've had presentations, we've done that, someone Dale would provide that. But to have it as part of the minutes is not in the procedures or policies as to how the board has decided to take minutes in our meetings. So I would find it to be more logical to have it as a separate attachment on the minutes page, or a separate document on the minutes page, and actually include it in the minutes, because I think it would be more confusing for the public to be trying to look at the minutes rather than just.
As long as when they pull up the minutes, it'll be on there.
It would not be on the minutes. It would be a separate document on the minutes page of the website.
That's what I'm saying. So when it comes up, it would automatically come up, the minutes plus the document.
It wouldn't automatically come up together. They'd be two separate items.
Okay. Like an exhibit?
No. Like, you click here and it's the minutes, and then you can go to this other item on the same page, that you would find the minutes, and it would be the attachments. Like, when we had the Carlson-Dutman, we had the minutes, and then we had the Carlson-Dutman presentation. That was two separate items.
I'm fine with that. So the?
So can we?
Chris.
Can we do with revision of the workshop, because I, title, because I agree that?
Yep.
Yes. Um, and then just have it as, when we get that summary from Dale Feinauer, I'll put it up there.
That's fine.
I'll put it out there, and so approve as revised.
That's fine.
Angel, I have a question.
Yes.
When does the discussion come to where the board will decide whether, um, we're going to, I don't think, I didn't get a good feel for, um, and maybe you did, for, if we did a superintendent search, all the steps that you would be taking. So at some point, because every time we talk about this, like, right now, from what I've heard from people is, because of the, what came out after that meeting in the news, we've just told every superintendent in the state of Wisconsin and everywhere else that there are board members who really don't want a superintendent. And I'm thinking, if we're gonna do a search for superintendent, I mean, that kinda says, you know what? They're not sure if they even want a superintendent. Is that someplace I wanna go? So I'm really concerned about the mixed messages out there, and I wanna know, do we have a date where this board is gonna say, I'm not voting for no superintendent, and we need to move ahead with the superintendent's search?
September 15th, we agreed for it to be on the agenda.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure. Well, you're talking about putting those Dale things out there, so I wanna make sure.
That's the minutes.
And I'm just letting you know, you're putting words in board members' mouths, just to let you know. So let's just move on.
Okay, Lisa, is there any change we're making, or are we just pulling this and voting on it on a different day?
What we are doing, we are changing.
We're gonna change with revision of just the title.
Correct. And then we are adding the separate document, the pros and cons of the superintendent group.
And I don't think the adding of pros and cons needs to be with the action, because the action is specifically.
You're right.
But I will do that when I get that from Dale.
Okay.
Can I ask a procedural question of?
Yes.
Can, can you do that without having a motion and a second on those minutes? Can you, can you reach even a consensus by the board on something that it hasn't actually put on the floor for debate?
It was on the floor, we had a motion.
Yeah, it's on the floor.
It's on, we're just figuring out what to do with it.
There was a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
To approve the minutes with the changes that she had made.
Oh, I thought the, the, I thought the motion was to make the changes, not to approve the minutes with changes. There's a big difference.
Okay, so.
I'm just, I just wanted to clarify so that nobody gets in any trouble.
Are there any other comments or questions on this? Amy, would you please read to us exactly what we're voting on?
Um, I have it as to approve, uh, approve consent item B with revisions.
What, what was the last part of that?
With revisions.
I, I think for clarification, just because there appears to be some confusion, if, um, the original motion maker and seconder would be willing to withdraw and then redo a motion, I think then we'd all be, I'd feel more comfortable that, that I know exactly what we're voting on. So I guess I'd request, respectfully request that. Just to, just to withdraw the original motion and second, and then redo it, because we've made so many changes in what we've been discussing.
Remove. Remove. I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended minutes, changing the word "meeting" to "workshop."
Second.
I thought you were just gonna say the date, second.
No, because it's the only thing we're talking about.
Any further discussion? Yes, Trish.
And you just used the word amended. So amended, by amended, you meant the change of the word from "meeting" to "workshop"?
Correct.
Okay. So it's the August 19th minutes with the word "workshop." The only thing that's different is the word "workshop" is where the word "meeting" is now.
Correct.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scherick?
Yes.
Ms. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Paxton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Okay, we're onto our presentation, and I will hand this over to administration. Tella, is most of this gonna be up, so I should move?
Not, not initially. This evening, your cabinet, and with a great deal of input from the leadership team, has put together a presentation at the request of the board, in order to view holistically its educational priorities, as well as the financial capacity of the district to deliver on those priorities. The agenda indicates that there are four sections, educational priorities, preliminary budget review, district financial capacity, and board discussion, possible action. Part B, the preliminary budget review, has two separate parts to it. So I'll be doing the first part, educational priorities, and then opening up for questions from the board. And Keel, and Dave, and Greg, and others are here to answer any of those questions. And then Bill Rudolph will be providing the first part of the budget review, and then Tom will be providing the second part of the budget review, and the district financial capacity is, is part of that. Our goal for the board this evening is for you to get a picture. It is to lay out for you what we view the educational priorities are for this next year, 2014, 15, the next three years, the next five years, and potentially well beyond that. In terms of the budget review, our goal is for you to have a very clear understanding of where we stand with the 2014-15 budget, and what that means relative to, for example, employee wages that are non-unionized, as well as other programs that, that we have. And then the financial capacity, a portion, the first part of that, will be to allow you to see what would happen to our budget if we changed some of the variables. So Tom has put together a program that would allow us to do that, and you can then, for example, suggest, well, if we did X, what would happen to the overall, to the overall budget? So if I could, um, just to direct your attention to the cover memo that had to do with educational priorities. And there were three pieces to this that we provided the board. The first one simply indicated, entitled District Educational Priorities, there's a revised, uh, uh, document there at your places, and I'll indicate to you what the revision is. The second document that was sent to you was the District Goals and Objectives and an executive summary, which was a, um, one-page, one-side of a sheet, um, handout. And then the third item was the updated complete District Goals and Objectives, which listed the original goals and objectives as the board approved them in December of 2010, and where we stand today with them. And those were updated, and every objective had a bold update on it. So let me go back to the sheet that was marked District Educational Priorities, and that was indicated revised at your places. The revision was the addition that is bold and italicized under Educational Program. I inadvertently left out the individual school improvement plans, which are a very critical piece of our educational program, and my apologies. I missed an email, and I should've included that. So that's the only revision that was made. So if I could just walk through this section, and then, as I said, myself and cabinet members are, are here to take any questions. These are not listed in priority order, they were simply grouped, and they're not listed by cabinet areas or by board committees specifically, so that we didn't compartmentalize things. So the first one has to do generally with special needs students. We know that we, as well as most districts in the state and nationally, have an achievement gap between special ed and regular ed students. We want to continue to move towards a complete inclusive environment and, um, place students in the least restrictive environment, instructionally, as well as behaviorally, and we want to continue to provide professional development, as well as scheduling that allows that to happen. We have identified, along with United Way and, uh, a couple of health partners, that the mental health needs of our students are very critical if they're going to achieve academically. And, um, one of them was on the consent agenda this evening, and hopefully, the board will approve that memorandum of understanding on Wednesday. We also know that we need to continue development of services for students who have or within the autism spectrum disorder. And there has been a great deal of literature that's been produced in the last five to seven years on autism, and we have a significant number of those students in the district, and that's something that we wanna key in on as well. And then finally, we want to continue to develop transitional outcomes for students with disabilities as a result of IDEA, and one of those is the Life Skill Center and Project Search, and we are moving in that, in that direction. Regarding the Life Skill Center, we are awaiting bids, and the Project Search is that we have partnership with businesses in the community that's in progress in terms of providing those transitional opportunities and skills for our students. In the general educational program, we want to continue to emphasize literacy, and that's across the curriculum, but primarily, it's seen its focus in grades 4K through 6. And that's across the curriculum, but primarily it's seen its focus in grades 4K through 6. We have to, as a result of educator effectiveness and the student learning objectives, as a result of the smarter balanced assessment because of the Common Core, and then the state required now EPAS system or Explore Plan ACT, we need to establish student assessment baselines and benchmarks. We had a student assessment committee work for a couple of years that identified what the assessments were that we were going to use. And what we need to do now is establish what those baselines and benchmarks are so that we know that our students are progressing. The state report card is one way of doing that, but it is not the sum total of looking at an educational program district-wide. Each teacher this year is going to be developing student learning objectives, or what they call SLOs. Principals are having to identify those as well as part of the educator effectiveness program. And eventually, central office staff that is cabinet members and the superintendent will most likely have to establish those, too. The smarter balanced assessment goes into effect, and of course, the state-required ACT program. So those are very important assessments that we need to identify in order to understand where our students are. Each school has identified a school improvement plan. They are listed in abbreviated form in the elementary handbook. And starting next year, they'll be listed in all of the secondary academic guides as well. These are individual to each school. And in the past, what we had done was we had brought forward a principal from the school to identify for the board what its school improvement plan was. We could do that again. We started with the Student Achievement Committee at the time, now the Educational Services Committee. It might be a good opportunity for the board to be able to see that information in one or both of those venues. We are all waiting for the conclusion of the Consolidated Task Force, which is very significant. We have to establish the priorities of that CTF report, in our opinion, based on student needs. Secondly, we should establish multi-year timelines for those recommendations and implementations. We need to be sure that if the board approves, or whatever the board approves in terms of those recommendations, we implement those with fidelity. And then we have to develop a multi-year funding strategy. One of the critical things about the Consolidated Task Force that I want to be very clear about this evening is this. The Consolidated Task Force is the result of four years of work. It's a result of taking the district goals and objectives that were approved in 2010 and putting those all on the table at once, saying that there were four major task forces committees that studied and brought those forward reports with probably hundreds of stakeholders: students, staff, parents, community members. And it is an opportunity for the board that it did not have in April of 2010, or in August of 2010, or at any time since. And that is to sit back without the financial tiger at the door and to say, what is it that we want for our district, one, three, five, probably as many as 10 or 15 years out? The board should have that conversation. The number, the dollar amount that the CTF comes forward with after it completes its work really is a function of the entire body of work over four years. And no one should blanch at that number. What, in our opinion, should be done is that the board look at that and then establish a long-range plan for the district. You wouldn't be tying boards' hands at all. You would be making decisions for next year or for the next two or three years. But for the longer term, you would at least be establishing some kind of long-range strategy to move the district forward. And then future boards can change those if they want. But the Consolidated Task Force recommendations are critical, not just from a practical, concrete, either program or bricks and mortar. But they're very important because they allow the board, in this moment, to say, here's our strategy, here's what we want for our district moving forward. And that is a decision that we make. It involves all of those other things. But it gives you, for the first time in four years, a comprehensive view of the district. Under human capital, the most critical piece that we, as your leadership team, felt needed to be addressed was professional development. It is very critical that all of our staff, all 1,000 employees, receive professional development. We need to prioritize those needs. We need to make sure that professional development, and of all of these bullet points, this is probably the most important one, it's the second one, is that professional development is systemic for our entire district. It's systematic, that there is a progression, and it builds upon what people have learned, and that it's sustainable in terms of monetary costs. One of the things that schools have not been very good at, or districts, is that when we put into place a professional development program and we hire, as we did this year, approximately 50 new teachers of three years from now, putting those new teachers then through the same professional development. That's something that we've been working on and trying to include so that when people come to our district in terms of RTI, PBIS, differentiation, technology, that we fold those people into the same kind of professional development that we had when people first received it. We're talking about instructional practices with professional development so that students can master the content. We're talking about being very, very faithful to articulation. And that's a buzzword in education. And what it simply means is this: if we're going to have an effective 4K-12 school system that the folks who teach at the 10th, 11th, and 12th grades know what they're building on, and the folks at the pre-K kindergarten, first, second, third, know what it is that they're building, too. And that requires conversations K-12. We've begun those with math last year. And I had a meeting last week with Dave Lockett and Keel Aronson about ensuring that that articulation takes place. That's vertical articulation. But there also needs to be horizontal articulation. There needs to be articulation among all sixth-grade teachers in the district, all English teachers in grades 7 through 12, or, for example, all math teachers in the ninth grade. That horizontal articulation is absolutely critical so that we do have some standard that we're delivering and implementing in the district. The educator effectiveness training goes without saying. I mentioned literacy as an emphasis. We have something in RTI called multi-tiered systems of support, both academic and behavioral. And that simply means that there are multi-tiered systems in place that support students in their academic and behavioral education in school. Technology, we absolutely need that. Brian has done a great job this year of patching together some professional development space at Jackson. But the Professional Development Center is something that's very much on our plate in order to bring forward to the board. Cultural competence, the administrative team, the leadership team, felt that in increasingly small world and global society, we do need to teach very directly and specifically cultural competence to our staff. And then finally, as part of one of the objectives of the human resources goal, that we would develop a teacher leadership and an administrator leadership academy, two separate ones, in order to provide professional development for them. Out of the Carlson-Detman report came a suggestion to empower our principals more. And from that, the professional action team was formed at the leadership team level. So one of the things that you should know is that our leadership team has put together annually for the last four years what we call professional action teams on very selected items. This year, one of those is employee engagement. And Ryan Arada, our principal at Washington, is heading up that group of the leadership team. And we intend on adding non-leadership team members to that. And this is a very critical one in terms of the conversations that the board has had regarding staff morale. We're exploring ways to improve and maintain a high level of employee engagement through a collaborative process to achieve greater input in decision-making, authentic recognition, self-advocacy, and transparent lines of up-and-down communication, input, and feedback. One of the things that we heard from the surveys last year were that staff wanted to have more input in decision-making. And so that fits in with the employee engagement. Another piece is that we want a very transparent, clear picture for our employees of where they go when there are issues, that they need to have avenues of communication that are very open and very transparent for them. By law, we can't negotiate with employee representative groups. And so it becomes a responsibility of the district to foster the idea and the culture that there are open means of communication, and there are people and avenues that you should access in order to share ideas, bring up concerns, and solve problems. So this group, the employee engagement group from the leadership team, is intent on doing that. And they're going to bring back recommendations sometime in the spring. And as I mentioned, they're going to involve non-leadership team members in that. Implementing the educator effectiveness model, which I've already mentioned, and then employee wages. Under the human capital section, this is an obvious one: settle outstanding contracts, wage increases for non-union groups as well, adopt and implement compensation and pay plans, and establish policy that is wage increases, if any, should take effect on July 1 of each year. All of this, of course, depends on the financial sustainability of the district, and that's a decision that the board will have to make after it sees the financial picture. We put transportation down because we wanted you to know some of the improvements that are being made, in addition to the new bus that was outside prior to the meeting. We want to increase efficiency throughout consolidation and maximizing bus capacity. That's something we're in the middle of right now. We purchased a new software system, and we're making a conversion from the old one to the new one. We want to dedicate buses to activity trips rather than have contracted services and provide more opportunities for employees. So it's a win-win for the district. And finally, there's a group of things underneath facilities and other areas. Implement safety and security team recommendations, which the board did approve for 14 and 15. And they have other recommendations for the next year and two. I mentioned the CTF, expanding LED lighting for all cognitive disorder, rather, classrooms. There's some research that shows that lighting really affects student learning with some of those students. And so we're looking to complete that this year. And then expanding our summer school food service program based on the monies available from the federal government and also based on student need. So with that in addition that I made that is in bold and italics of school improvement plans, these are what we view as the educational priorities for this year and some for beyond this year. In addition to these are the goals and objectives that I think it was a 14-page document that you received. I'm not going to go through each one of those. That would be way too dry. But we did try to be very careful in portraying to you where we stood with these objectives. And they are grouped as they were at the very beginning. For example, under student achievement, there's the culture of achievement. And then there is a co-curricular program, culture of communication, and so on. So that each one of the goals has been chunked into areas, and then the objectives underneath. These are the objectives that the board approved in 2010. There were none that were changed, removed, added, they were not abridged. The statements are exactly as they were. And then, as I mentioned, the bold is where we stand today. And then that executive summary that I presented to you, provided to you, is just a quick snapshot of where we are today. And I would be glad, at this point, to have any questions and then ask my colleagues to help answer them.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Are the educational priorities that you've identified here, are they all tied into very specific goals and objectives?
No, they're not. That's a good question. Some are. Some are the direct result of. So for example, the Consolidated Task Force, that is a direct result of the objectives and the goals of the goals and objectives. That's a direct result of that. It's not mentioned because it took the four committees that were, or the task forces that were mentioned in the goals and objectives, and it's putting them all together. So the CTF itself is a function of my creation that it was really necessary to pull all of this together for the board and have a group come forward with recommendations. So there are some others. So for example, when you talk about multiple and effective means to address the mental health needs of students, you'll find that indirectly in some of the goals and objectives, the transition outcomes for students with disabilities. So we could go down that list.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could just note here which goals and objectives each one of the priorities referred to, because like you said, it might be in several different areas.
Right. Yeah. I would be glad to do that. I don't think I can do that now, but I would be glad to do that. And I'll send that out to the board.
Great.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I had a question with the executive summary. There are two columns below the broad outcomes.
Right. Jeff, I'm going to need to borrow somebody's hard copy because somebody's-
Here. One's the 2014-15 and one is the 2015. I'm just wondering how you arrived at the 2015 and what relationship they have to the 2014-2015, if they're in addition to, or?
Yeah. So what we tried to do here was to list all of the objectives in a very brief phrase or word or two, Meg. So the difference is that 2014-15 are what we had begun working on as early as 2010, 11, 12, 12, 13, and so on, that we may not have reached completion for. The bolded ones are those that we have completed. And then we put aside some that we weren't ready to address yet, either because it wasn't the natural next step, or we just didn't have the bodies or the funds to do that. So the ones in the right-hand column that are bolded, interestingly enough, transpired not as necessarily a direct result, but as because of some work that we were doing in ones that we were establishing priorities. So for example, the MST partnerships, that took off very, very quickly this year in particular, thanks to the work of Keel and Brigida Altman and the tech ed departments in the secondary schools. The individual health and fitness wellness plan, that came about as a result of the PEP grant, which had just been received two or three months prior to the board approving the goals and objectives. So its work over three years produced that. The internship program in the community, that came about as a result of the work with Keel and Brigida and the tech ed departments. And then speaking and presentation skills program, that became incorporated into the emphasis on literacy. So those things have all happened as a result of other work that was being done. But the other items, the ones that are not bolded, that are in italics or that are just plain print, are ones that we are still either working on or that we haven't started yet. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Chris?
Oh, yeah, just a general question. A number of people that I was looking at this with from 2010 to the current date, and I've been around so long, I can't, I was on a facilities committee, I think, twice. And I'm just wondering, has this kind of systemic review, as far as you know, ever been done in the district?
No. When we first developed the goals and objectives in 2010, we went back and looked at what was then called the, I think it was called the Long Range Planning Committee.
Right. The Long Range Planning Committee, right.
Yeah. And we looked back at the work that it did and went back to other major works in the district. And we couldn't find anything other than the strategic plan that had been developed. But when we looked at the strategic plan, it had actually been collecting dust on a shelf.
Right.
That objectives and goals and strategies there were not being addressed. And you also might remember that in the fall of 2010, a lot of the concern and conversation had to do with the financial concerns of the district. And one of the primary motivations for putting together this long list of objectives under three broad goals was to redirect the focus of the district's conversation to students. So to my knowledge, other than that strategic plan, which I saw, but which didn't get a lot of traction in terms of things being completed, I didn't- lot of traction in terms of things being completed, I didn't see any systemic review. But I was also asked to do a systemic review of everything that we touched when I came to the district. And that's what we've been doing.
And the reason I ask is because one of the things I was asked by one of the, actually one of the companies that has our students there in youth options, and they didn't realize we had the district goals and looked at a lot of the things that have been done since 2010. And one of the questions that I, I'm always curious, why aren't people, you know, I'm like really excited about all these things, and a couple of people said, yeah, well, you had facilities committees, but you know, you fixed a lot of things, but you never really did anything. You had a lot of committee or task forces to do these things, but we never saw any results come from them, other than when you went to referendum for that kind of thing. So they were really surprised at all of the things that have happened and things that, you know, an example is our kids, parents can look at their kids' grades, and they can get online and do a lot of those things that they never had before. So it's just, it's very comprehensive. And I was actually part of the strategic plan and long-range planning, and there were piecemeal things done, but it was never a view like this. So this is really, I think, very exciting, not only for the district and the students, but I think for the community too, because they were involved in a lot of this, so.
If I could just make maybe a footnote to that about why there are people who don't know what the goals and objectives of the district are. And there are really two reasons. When the board made cuts in the spring of 2010 in order to balance its budget, it was around $7.5 million. One of the positions that was cut was a public relations coordinator. And when I stepped into the district and had to rebuild positions in the cabinet, that was one of the positions that had been cut, and we didn't go there, to use an expression. The second reason is really the more important one. The board approved the goals and objectives in late December of 2010. In late January, I think it was January 26th or 27th to be exact, Act 10 was introduced into the legislature. That whole political event really took away any kind of momentum that we may have had with the goals and objectives. It overshadowed everything that we had. And so what we set about doing was going and doing the work. It would have been great to have had a little bit more publicity and a little bit more engagement on the part of the community regarding the goals and objectives, but it was, in a sense, taken out of our hands. However, we continue to do the work. As a result, you see the things that were bolded and the things that have been done.
Well, just one other comment. When I made a bullet list of the things that I was asked about, one of them was after going to a, the Portage County Business Council had a meeting, and I had two people say that they wanted to present something to potential people moving, doctors or people moving into the district. And we have this amazing, that no one really knew about, this plan, or this, I don't know what you call it, but the communications plan that we have, and then also the portfolio of our district, of our schools. And they were so excited to see that, that they can hand someone who's coming in, show them all our schools, show them, you know, what we're about, and it's a beautiful thing. We've never had anything like that. And I remember when I first went to the Stevens Point Travel Bureau, I said, I looked at some of the things I had, and I said, well, where's all the information for potential parents moving into the district? And they just, they had nothing. So I think that was one of the other things, that was just an amazing thing that we did in the last few years.
Any other questions for Attila on this? All right.
One final comment before Bill comes up. Oftentimes, these kinds of things, words on a page, get exactly that kind of attention, words on a page. What I would like to let the board know is that, in a very real way, this is what the district is doing to educate kids. And yes, it is about the money, and the money helps drive that, the resources, but this is your educational program. And every day, you see components of that in the classroom, whether it's literacy, or this coming, your educator effectiveness, or helping kids transition, or any one of a number of things. But I just want to emphasize that this is not the soft stuff. This is actually the hard stuff. And this is what our teachers and our educational assistants and our principals and our cabinet members are doing every single day. So I want you to know that from our vantage point, this is the most critical thing that the district does on a daily basis. Okay, it's my pleasure to introduce Bill Rudolph, our finance manager, who's got the next portion.
I need to recuse myself for 7B. So Amy, can you record that? I'm recusing myself for 7B. Thank you.
Are we taking a break?
Is everybody recusing themselves?
Yeah. Let's take a three-minute break since half the board had to leave.
Everybody left.
I thought, did I miss that? So just as quickly as possible, please, just go and come back.
I'm still doing the old fashioned.
The purpose of the presentation here is to go through the preliminary budget as it was developed back in February and March. It's just to go through the process of what the basic, the main revenues and expenses are.
We can't hear. Hold on, just one second, Bill. Maybe you could ask the people in the hallway to...
Yeah, we can't hear what they're saying.
The people in the hallway in and back. Yeah. They're very loud.
Guys, we can't hear anything. We're talking to the background. Thank you. Yeah.
There we go. Get wired.
The purpose of the presentation is to go through the preliminary budget as it was built back in February and March. And there has been a few minor changes through June when it was, actually came to the board for approval before we got to July 1st, when the year actually started. If you go to the first page, they always refer to the district as having a $100 million budget. The purpose of the first page here really is to show, these are the funds we have, gives you what the name of it is, a number, and it shows where we are, just over $100 million in total. What we're going to present tonight, though, strictly has to do with that very first line, Fund 10. That's our operating fund. The first graph you've got is revenues in Fund 10. It really, obviously, it shows, sticks out that the big blue area here is the revenues that are controlled by the revenue limits, which are set by the legislature, in DPI. We have, in effect, no control over what they are. But you see, basically, the main item here is strictly that one, it's 90% of our revenues, is that one item. This page here will show you a list of all the items that make up the revenues. Again, the first item is your equalized aid, computer aid, and property taxes. That is strictly what is controlled by DPI. It's based on our students, number of students we have, and how much they allow us to levy or generate as revenue per student, which is just over $9,200. After that, the rest of the revenues in here are obviously much smaller in size, and we don't have a control over a lot of those. The state and federal aids. That's your transportation aid, which is our busing, library aid. We have your Title I, Title II, all the title funds from the federal government. Again, keep in mind that this was a number prior to July 1st. A lot of our federal grants hadn't even been authorized yet. So these numbers are obviously going to change. Medicaid revenue. This is the portion that we get from Medicaid based on our cost report we file. DPI has designated, for Medicaid, we get ongoing revenues throughout the year, where we bill for time spent with different students that are Medicaid-eligible, and we get revenues each month as we go. Once we get to the end of our fiscal year, we also file what's called a cost report. And once all of those are filed for the state, and they go through and audit them, they say, okay, now we're going to pay you more based on how much money they actually have available for all schools. And we estimate ours, based on what we've been told, should be about $400,000 that we'll get, in addition to what they've already paid us for the, as you go, revenues. The next item on here, it's a combination. It has to do with our bus purchases. Prior to, two years ago, or three years ago, when we bought our buses, we actually did it by way of what's called an operating lease. So all you record is, each year, as you make a payment, you record it as vehicle rental, rather than actually a purchase. We changed that, I think it was two or three years ago, Tom Owens corrected that, and we are doing it now with what's called a capital lease. We make six equal payments. At the end of the six years, the buses belong to us. And then we can turn them on and sell them, or do as we please. What happened with the old way, when we got to the end of the bus lease, we would have to make a big payoff, because there was a lump sum payoff at the end, and then we'd turn them on and sell the buses for exactly the same amount to, I think it was usually Nelson Bus Service. So it was a zero net, but there was two transactions, one big revenue, one big expense. With the new ones, under capital leases, when you make the purchase of the buses initially, you record the entire amount as a capital lease revenue, and the offset amount is a capital acquisition, which is a bus purchase. And then as you make payments during each year as you go, you have a capital lease expense, principal, and interest payments. But they're no longer considered vehicle rentals. Now it's considered like a long-term debt. The next revenue on here is open enrollment in. What happens, these are for students that are residents of a different district and have chosen to come here. We get approximately $6,600 per student. And same with, ours that go out, we pay about $6,600 to the other districts. We have a insurance dividend, that's the amount that M3 has negotiated for us with the insurance companies that have bid on our business. We have student fees, which is not only the base student fees, but it's also co-curriculars, and so is for special classes that have specific books that are required. It's driver's ed. We have some, a few rentals, we have a couple houses, and we have offices down at the professional Gifts that show up here in Fund 10 are either non-restricted, or they're gifts that are going to be all spent in the same year. If we get a gift from, let's say, the Century Foundation for theirs, if it's going to carry over into various years, we have to go through Fund 21. And that's required by DPI, so you don't, in effect, mess with your equalized aid payment calculations. And the last item on here was kind of my catch-all for everything else. It's admissions to events, interest income, and everything else. You see, we come out with $75 million. Basically, that is our fiscal capacity, because that's all we have to work with. Most items on here for revenues, we have almost no control over. They're set by the state or somebody else. Down to expenses, the first section has to do with wages and benefits. And again, the first line on here refers to the payroll pools. What happens is that the HR department here creates what's called a salary negotiation plan, and then I import those into the budget. And there's about, usually there's nine or 10, I think this year, because we have people that now are calendar-year versus school-year employees, and they get paid differently. I believe Jenna created different ones for all those, so we had about 15 of them. But these are people that were working for the district March 15th. Obviously, this entire $43 million is going to have to be taken back out of the budget and have to redo it come September 15th, once we know who's actually working here at that point, and what their wages are and what their benefits are. And we already know that some benefits, like health insurance, has changed, so this number will not be the same. We just don't know what it's going to change to. I create separate worksheets, basically, to estimate what we're going to spend for overtime, extra time, and temporary part-time. This is the wage and related fringe benefits, which is your social security and retirement. And it's based, for the most part, is based on either something I have been informed of, or it's based on what has happened in the past by school or department. Bus drivers, you've got $1,003,000. They're not part of the payroll pool, because we don't import them by person, strictly my guess, based on the last three years of what we have spent for bus drivers. The school board, it's what you are paid, plus social security, Medicare. There were some miscellaneous smaller fringe benefits that come out to approximately $100,000 that were included. Summer school, it's a completely separate budget all by itself, but it is part of Fund 10. And included in there is about $700,000 in wages and fringes. Next line is referred to as net OPEB impact. That's the other post-employment benefits. It's what we pay for retirees, for health insurance, long-term care, dental, and vision. And this is the net effect on Fund 10, based on what the actuarial firm has told us we can put in there, and what we have to take out based on the implicit rate subsidy. The next item on there, again, this was based on what we knew in March, is the Fund 80 custodial wages. Well, we now know, once we got to July 1st, that that will probably be going away, but this is strictly based on what we knew when we created the preliminary budget. And we have $1,004,000 is undesignedated. That was basically the number I needed to balance the budget, so revenues equaled expenses in Fund 10. And that was what it was at that point in time. So there are so many things that are going to change here. It's anybody's guess as to where that's going to end up when we're done. I know Tom is going to address that a little later, as far as what some things we know have already happened are going to happen. The next slide has to do with non-wages or benefits. And there's two different sections. The first one has to do with allocations that you have approved back in December. You approve a per-pupil allocation for each school, and that's up to each principal as to how they're going to spend that. And it has to do with whether it be travel, or supplies, or anything else to operate their building. You've got department allocations. That includes superintendent's office, the business office, the HR office. It includes IT. There's a number of small, different departments out there also that are included. This is the allocation that you approved for all of them back in December. There's a rather larger allocation here for buildings and grounds. That's for everything that Don Kek needs to not just operate, but also maintain, repair for all the buildings and all the grounds throughout the district. Transportation, $3 million. This is not the bus drivers, and it's not, it does include a portion of the older leases, because they're still considered operating leases, it's considered a vehicle rental. It's not a debt service. Does include fuel, supplies, everything else to operate the bus garage. Bus purchases, that is the, either it's the payoff at the end, or it was the final, the new capital lease expense that was recorded. 4K is a separate allocation all by itself. Again, Sherry, the principal for 4K, doesn't have a whole lot of control, it's based on what you have approved to pay each of the various 4K sites, based on how many children they have, and how many days they're in attendance. In the last page of the expenses... In the last page of the expenses, this is pretty much everything else that didn't fall in the first two. It includes open enrollment out, which is our students to go into another district. Insurance, the big thing there obviously is workman's comp, but we have all the other property and casualty insurances are in there also. We have copiers is our maintenance agreement we have with EO Johnson. This is the net district cost. Nurses that we have contracted with Portage County. Police liaison that we've contracted, I believe is with the city of Stevens Point. Skyward, $125,000, that's what we pay for our annual licensing fees for HR, finance, student records. I think there's a few other small ones too, but it's basically everything we pay to Skyward. Tuition reimbursement, that's what was paid to teachers or administrators that take college classes to further their education. Teacher subs, this is what is paid to teachers on call. They're no longer employees of ours, they, we are contracting with teachers on call for that. The next one, the $200,000 is actually, it's the one where I lumped, printed everything in that didn't fit someplace else. It's site rentals, which is the ball fields, KB Willett, includes our bank fees. We have traveling teachers that go between different buildings every day. We have homeless transportation. There's some special ed contracted transportation that goes here and there's other fees that we pay, belong to WIA, some of the other things that we have to pay for. The big item on this page obviously is the transfer to Fund 27. In Fund 27, we spend approximately $13 million. Eight and a half million is what we have to fund out of the general fund. The rest of it gets paid by either state aid or federal flow-through grant. This year as part of some of the expenses, we had, there were some additional allocations. One was to IT and one was to curriculum for textbooks. And the last item on here is youth options, online classes and the Challenge Academy. And the total of revenues and expenses are, should come out to be exactly the same. The last slide is basically your, your last graph. Again, it shows you that wages and fringes are 65%. If we added, if we added Fund 27 to Fund 10 and merged them, that percentage would be a lot higher because a good share of Fund 27 is salaries and fringe benefits. So we'd be probably closer to 75%, I believe is what. But here it'll show you that the wages and fringes are just a 65% just in Fund 10. I would stress that if you look at, you know, people look and say, well, geez, we have money to spend or can't we pay for this or for that? If you take money out of one area from the expenses, you gotta take, take it from someplace else because there is no other revenue sources unless somebody has something in mind. We always take donations. Questions?
What is Fund 27?
Fund 27 is special education.
Okay, so what you're saying is that we're covering out of, we're covering out of our budget, $8,500,000, the remainers being covered through federal, state?
Federal and state grants, yes.
And is that an ever-increasing number? Am I to assume?
It has been, yes. I'm hoping once we're, we actually get everything finalized here that we, that number can be lower than eight and a half, but that's where it was as of March.
There is a, and I'm going to ask Greg to explain the maintenance of effort. There is a, it's not so nuanced, but it is an important thing for you as a board to know how our hands are tied in some ways by what's called maintenance of effort. Yeah, would you, Greg? Thanks.
Thank you.
This goes to your question, Meg.
Okay, thank you.
Maintenance of effort is, oh. Maintenance of effort is a portion of the Individuals Disabilities Education Act that in its simplest form requires that districts spend at least as much on special education they did the year prior. So in other words, it's a, it's a failsafe to prevent boards or districts from cutting services or resources to the most vulnerable portion of the population during difficult So what we do in this district is we try to hold our, our year-to-year transfer amount from Fund 10 to Fund 27 as flat as possible.
Is that based on per student or is that a flat number?
It's a numeric, it's, it's measured by the transfer amount, yeah.
There's four different tests. One is by student, one is by total. But we have to meet one of those tests.
Correct.
You want to keep it as low as possible because once you increase it, you can't go back.
Right.
Specific dollar amount, so you're left into the dollar amount.
Right.
Correct.
So when you're saying you have to meet one of those tests, does the district choose the test or once you've chosen, is that the test yourself?
No, it's any one of the tests, any, any year. So as long as you meet one of the, there are three actual tests. As long as you meet one of them, you're, you're qualified. If you don't meet one of those tests, then you have to pay money back to the feds and they withhold your, your federal grant dollars.
If you would have a brochure or a paper or something that could just really, not, not to confuse me, but to give me just a specific, what are the four tests, just for my information?
Sure.
And I don't know if the rest of the board would, would like that, but I think that would be helpful for me to get my hands on.
Maintenance of effort is, is a very difficult portion of the law to understand. We have been trying for years to get legislators at the federal level to understand maintenance of effort and to measure it in a different way. The way that it's currently being measured is problematic for all of the states.
Thank you.
So on that same topic, I just want to, just another point of clarification on, I should probably use this. On the first page, you've got special education is $12,445, I'm sorry, $12,445,717. That's our total, that's what we, that's what we spend as a district total on special education?
Correct.
But this $8,500, that's what we reported for maintenance of effort?
That's the district skin in the game for special education?
Okay, okay.
Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, the rest of that is made up with grants and other income sources.
Right. It's a flow-through grant in preschool and title one, those are the two main federal grants. Dollar for dollar, whatever we can charge to those grants, we give back every dollar.
Okay.
There is the other part of the Medicaid funding that goes, that's billed as you go every month that goes into Fund 27, which is about $400,000. And then whatever is left over is referred to as handicap payable and it has to be basically wages and fringe benefits for, for people that actually have licenses for what they're teaching. And we give back approximately 26 or 27 cents on the dollar. And the difference is the eight and a half million that's left over.
Okay.
And that's ours.
And then that eight and a half million, is that the maintenance of effort number that we claim?
Yes.
That's what we claim every year? And you try to keep that?
As flat as possible.
Even though we actually spend considerably more than that, but we get a lot back? Did I say that right?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
We spent, we technically spend net out of the district is eight and a half million. We might spend $12 million something for everything, but the other part is funded by the feds or the state or.
Right. So if I'm just, if I'm just talking to somebody about what the district pays for special ed and not just what we pay out for special ed, the $12 million number is what we pay out for special ed, but we get, but we get at least $4 million back every year, at least in one way or another. Okay, good, thank you. You know, kind of, sort of on that same topic, kind of, is the $400,000 that is for Medicaid. Okay, it's on one of these pages here. Is that, no, pardon me?
Senator Reverend.
Okay, thank you. There we go. So that $400,000, is that, is that the amount that the district gets every year? I mean, is that a number that we can kind of, that you, that you kind of count on every year it's that amount or close? No? Well, I.
Last year we got, we had a, there was a million dollar payment from 2005 and '06.
Yeah.
We didn't know, we didn't know what was coming, like, what is this?
Well, that's what, that was my next follow-up question was that, it was that, that money that you got from, the money that the school district got from 2005 and 2006, we're holding that to potentially build a life skills center, right?
Right. That was actually part of a cost report. And the cost report, the Medicaid cost report is related to Medicaid, but the school-based services, that's the $400,000 that you see in the budget. That, that $400,000 amount is, is an amount that we have titrated for the last several years. When I arrived in the district, we were at about $100,000 and through the extra efforts of our staff members and our therapists, we have been able to increase that amount to a fairly reliable number of about $400,000. That $1 million payment that Bill just referenced, that was for prior year's cost reports and essentially what they're trying to do is they're trying to reconcile those Medicaid costs and the reimbursement amounts from prior years. They can't do it in real time, so that's why we budget the $400,000 and the cost reports are reconciliation from prior years. That's why they're, they're categorized a little differently in as far as the accounting.
Yeah. What happened was that back in those earlier years, which included 2005, '06, the company that was contracted by the state to oversee this wasn't doing quite right.
Yeah.
And, and they had a lot of trouble trying to figure out how are we going to reconcile with all of these schools out there now that have filed these cost reports from way back to get them some payment for what they did? And they said, they made one settlement payment, they said, but we're not going to do one for all the other years in between either. We're just, we're cutting off and say that's, we're done with everything other than last year now.
And that's the money, and just correct me if I'm wrong, so this is kind of actually a question, not a statement, but that's the money that the district is holding in reserves at some place for the life skills center?
It's, what we're holding for the life skills center is actually money that had been received two years ago.
Okay.
Not this, not this million, it's actually something that was received.
They were some blended Medicaid funds.
Okay.
We were getting, we were getting money because they were trying to catch up and correct what had been done and we never knew what we were going to get.
Okay.
And now we're, it's still, it's so new with what the new regulations are, we're still kind of guessing based on, we contract with Compass Care to help us and they say, well, this is our best guess is what you're going to get, both from the cost report or from the, from the daily month-to-month billings. That's why there's actually 200, 400 thousands. One is in Fund 10, one is in Fund 27.
Okay, okay. But the, essentially the bottom line for the life skills center is that we have the money.
No tax dollars, they're Medicaid dollars, yes.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Chris?
Bill, two things. School board, $30,000 underneath that, that miscellaneous under wages and benefits, what is that? Under wages and benefits?
Yeah, I think when I was, when I was going through the, sorry, you're going to talk into the mic. When I was going through the wages and benefits in total and I could identify all the other items on there, I basically needed $100,000 more to come up with what, what was the $49,100,000 because that was my total. I think it's kind of more of a rounding from, from all the other ones that I, that didn't quite fit in.
Okay. And the other question is, I want to put this very tactfully. Should we decide that we, I know we had put money away for possible settlement for teachers for 11, 12? Where, where would that money be?
That's in fund balance.
That is in the fund balance?
Yeah, whatever you have in settle for past years.
Right.
That, if you actually, if you increase their base wages, that will increase what's on here.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to make sure where it was.
Past year is part of it, that portion would come out of fund balance.
Okay, thanks.
Bill, to, to further answer Chris's question, the, the undesignedated, the undesignedated funds, the 1.4 million is where Chris is talking about?
Well, that would, that would pay the current year's increased portion, but what we're paying for the prior year's settlements would come out of fund balance. That's why fund balance has grown for the last couple of years is because we haven't settled.
Right. All right.
There's that distinction between this year.
Now and previous years, right. Okay, I just want to make sure, I thought that was right, but I just, sure. Okay.
On that, sort of the same note, on the wages and benefits, there's the net OPEB amount of 2.2 million. Is that, because I'm new on the board, I don't know the right answer to this, is, we're not paying OPEB to people that retire now, correct? That ended a couple of years ago?
No, they, there are still some provisions where people can retire, but the payment that we make for their, our portion of that is, I think it's $500 per month.
Okay. And is that amount shrinking? I mean, are we paying less for OPEB now than we were five years ago, for example?
We didn't have, we didn't have an OPEB fund five years ago.
Yeah.
We started, I think, 2010.
But the district was paying it.
We were, just to pay as you go. We did not have a separate trust fund.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that, that's critical to understand, we didn't have a separate trust fund. But to answer your question directly, so in June 30th of 2011 is when that benefit, that previous eight-year benefit for teachers, administrators and support services ended for any future retirees.
Okay.
All right? So if you take the folks that retired in 2011 and recognize that they've been retired now, the three years, there is five years left on that liability because it was an eight-year benefit. What the district approved subsequent to June 30th of 2011 was what we called an open retirement window. And for people who submitted letters of resignation, or excuse me, retirement at that time, the benefit was, Tom, was it?
A thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars a month for five years. Then it reduced to 750.
Fifty and then 500.
And now it, when it expires in 2016, it's 500 a month for five years.
So after 2016, going forward for the next five years, there, there won't, there won't be any OPEB payments out except for the people that were still paying that retired in 2011 or '12 or '13?
So the folks who retired in 2011, that liability will end in 2019.
Okay.
The people who retire in 2016 that receive that $500 benefit per month for five years, that liability will end in 2021 unless the board approves the continuation of it.
So all things being equal right now, if we don't make any decisions about OPEB, we're done paying OPEB in 2021?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you for clearing that up for me.
Yeah, that, just, and just to put it in a bigger context, that in June of 2011, absent anything else happening, the district's liability for the existing OPEB at that time, as well as the premiums for long-term care, was upwards of 82 million. But by 2021, if the board, for example, does not extend the open retirement window, the district would no longer have any liability.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Bill? Jeff, go ahead.
The Fund 80 here under wages and benefits, I think you've got, is that going to disappear here? Is this?
Well, we, we don't think it's going to go away completely, but most of it.
I think there's about $100,000 or something.
Well, we, we don't know if it's going to be 30,000 or where we're going to end up, but most of that, in effect, what's going to happen is it'll reduce the bottom line. Instead of $1,004,000.
Instead of a million-four, as undesigned, that'll be 500,000.
Oh, I see.
We'll just lose 900,000 right away.
Changes the undesigned, okay.
Right. Because the undesigned was what I needed to balance the budget.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry. Bus sales, our bus sales and leases and rentals and so forth amount to 1.4 million. And then, the payment of the bus drivers, just so I'm really clear on this, is another-
1.3.
1.3. So, so we spend roughly about $2.7 million transporting people around, transporting children.
Well, plus there is an allocation for, on the next page, for transportation.
Oh, right, right. Okay, another $3 million for fuel and so forth.
So that's all, that's all, that's all the costs of the employees and the buses and operating the actual bus garage.
Okay, so, but-
And it's contracting with LAMERS is in there too.
5.7 million dollars in that neighborhood. Whatever those three numbers are together.
Yes.
Okay, all right. A big chunk of money.
Mm-hmm. I think as Tom says, we, our buses, in effect, drive from Miami to San Francisco and back every day.
Yeah.
They drive that kind of miles.
Actually, it's not 5.7, it's 6.7, because then you have bus purchases right underneath there, so-
Well, there's, there's offsetting revenues too, though. There's, there's a revenue out there that offsets some of the expenses, because it's what's required for accounting, principles.
Okay.
That's why there's, I think there's a million-
1.4.
1.4 million in the revenue side of it. Basically, that's what we record capital lease revenue.
Oh.
For purchasing the buses. And it's the actual sale of the buses that are, is still occurring from those operating leases.
Okay, okay. Got it. Yeah, okay, I get it. And I'm sorry, my last question, can I ask one more?
Of course.
Okay. Over here. Summer school, I saw the, I think it's a $700,000 for summer, summer school. Is, are summer school expenses, are some of the teachers, are some of the costs of summer school reimbursed through grants, or, I mean, is there some revenue for summer school?
No.
So, it's-
What, what happens with summer school is, is, we do, we do have minimal fees that we charge, about $20,000 for the kids, it's, I don't know if it's $5 or $10 per class. We can't charge, in fact, we, at that, we're probably pushing the limit, because if we charge anything else, we can't claim those students for, as student, you know, for membership count purposes.
Okay.
If I can just add to that, we get the FTEs, though.
We get the FTEs, so that's why we-
That's the revenue that we get.
The revenue comes from the revenue limit.
Right. We get to charge FTEs.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Putting on summer school.
Okay. So, so I guess my question is, is that if we were to stop, if we were to simply stop doing summer school, and I'm not suggesting that we would do that, I'm just making a hypothetical, we would actually lose money ultimately because we get to charge for the FTEs. Did I, did I say that right?
We get the FTEs.
Yes.
And as, which increases our revenue limit.
Right.
And as part of that, we do get the equalized aid on the expense part of it. So it's not like it all goes to, goes to tax levy.
It's sort of like we would, we would shrink. It would just cause the whole budget to shrink, and, and so the levy limits, the limits would shrink as well.
Right.
Did I get that right?
The revenue limits would shrink.
Okay. Okay. So it's to our benefit to continue, I mean, it's, it's our benefit to continue teaching summer school because we're a school district, but, but financially as well?
Right.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Now I'm done. Thank you.
That's it?
I feel like I should applaud. Thanks.
Tom is going to set up the next, the next portion of the, the presentation. I'll wait, well, Kim stepped out. So there are four parts, as we said, and you've had two. This third part is the part where it's, it's dynamic or it's interactive. So Tom can adjust some variables here, so you can see what will happen to the undesigned amount when some of those variables are changed. The fourth part is done in closed session because they refer specifically to negotiations with the current four union groups that, that we have. But before Tom, Tom begins, I want to make a point here about the budget and looking a little bit backwards, so that you can look forwards. Every school district has a unique set of circumstances that causes its budget to be what it is. Some school districts are wealthier than we are, some are poorer than we are. But what is undeniable is that when you go back and look at where we were in August of 2010, and where we are today, with 1,000 employees, we laid off one person net, and that was a social studies teacher at Ben Franklin in the 2011-'12 school year. Yes, it is true that teachers have not seen a pay increase, that custodial maintenance folks have not seen a pay increase. However, we did give pay increases to other employee groups during that time period, as well as a supplemental pay. In addition to that, we have brought back programs that were lost in the cuts. We've established new initiatives and new programs. And my point simply is, is that the board, through some very difficult decisions, as well as your administration and your leadership team, have gotten us to the point where today, amidst some very difficult financial times, we have a budget that allows us to open school and move forward, and we're not in financial crisis. That's very important to understand, because the budget, and Tom always reminds us, that once you start building that budget, those numbers are wrong until the final budget is approved at the end of October. This district's budget, whether you want to talk about Fund 10 at 75 million, or you want to talk about the entire budget when you look at everything at 100 million, could turn on a dime. And that's why it's very important that the board, once it gets this information, sets back and takes its time and understands the ramifications of moving forward, whether it's professional development, because you want to sustain that, whether it's wages and benefits, because you want to sustain that, whether it is, for example, continuing to operate your own transportation system, and some of the non-monetary benefits of that, which are employees who know students and riding on buses, or food service. So there are other factors that go into that budget-making that are educational decisions that the board needs to consider. And that's very important, which is why I said at the very outset, that the educational priorities are the most important. They drive and should drive your budget. And the person who actually professes that and pronounces that more often than anybody is Tom. As a business manager, he says, we need to look at student needs first and let that drive what we spend our money on. So I'm going to turn it over now to Tom for part three.
Can I just ask him a question? Tell it first?
Sure.
You mentioned that we only had to lay off one teacher at that time. Would that have, would the 50-some retirees that retired that year, would that have made a difference if we had to lay some off if we went and had so many retirees that year?
You know, I, that's a good question, Kim. And I've often thought about what would have happened if, if Act 10 had never been introduced, and we had, and we had seven contracts, and we knew that we had to negotiate those, what would have happened? In the area of FTE, I can almost guarantee you that we would have laid off many, many teachers and other employees in order to balance that budget. What actually saved us, there were two things. One was the ability to control our own finances to a greater degree as a result of Act 10. But also what happened was that the Obama administration gave money to school districts, and we received 1.7 million. We spread that out over two years, those of you that are on the board might remember that, 850,000 in each of the two years. And then we very carefully employed in each of those two years, so that we could put our money away and use that money, which had to be expended by September of 2013. So we spent 1.7 million of the administration's money gratefully, but what it allowed us to do was to not spend our own money as much and be able to grow our fund balance and be able then to carry that FTE forward. So what's even more remarkable is that we added FTE in 11-12 and maintained that moving forward, even though we lost the 1.7 million. And that was, again, the result of hard work by the board, by the administration, and some very, very strategic planning financially in order to move forward. So I don't know what exactly would have happened, but I think what would have happened, we would have had to have laid off employees, because as Bill just pointed out, if you look at the overall $100 million budget, 75% of that is your personnel cost, it's the lion's share.
I'll be picking up now at the point where we talked about the preliminary budget having an undesigned expense that was used to balance the budget out. This is the amount of money that gave us our flexibility to deal with issues. And if I use my handy-dandy pointer, we're talking about this being a critical point right there. That's the 1.4 million. This column will be used for a number of items that will affect the general fund, and the 27, because they're rolled together here. The impact on the budget, plus or minus, a, starting with the 1.4 million, and adding or decreasing, and then a running balance. So what we have here at 1.4, the first thing that came into play for us then is this issue. And that is, the, the fact that the 80 fund change at the legislature requires us to make use of only those expenses that are specific to the 80 fund itself. Let me click on this, this gives you an example, the, the yellow highlight is important. In plain language, the way the new rules, under the new law, read, ineligible costs include costs that would be incurred by the school district if the community programs and services were not provided by the district. So that's the main test we had to ask ourselves as we looked at this. What happened in the past is, we would look at the total number of hours that community entities would utilize our facilities, and then we would apportion the starting wage and benefits of the custodians to those hours, and subtract out the total number of fees that we collected, roughly $25,000, roughly, 35, 25, somewhere around there, I've got the exact number later on. And then that net is what we transferred to the 80 fund and was picked up by that levy. This year, in looking at what moves forward, the, the most we can come up with that is legitimately consistent with the new law is 30 to 35,000. So as a result, 840,000 will be moving back into the general fund. This, as you can see the effect of what that does, is you move the 840,000 back in, and that undesigned amount then drops down to 560,000. Excuse me. There's another program in the 80 fund, which is the, could you grab a water bottle? Yeah, thank you. Which is the truancy abatement program. This is a very important program, it's been carried in the 80 fund. The rationale at that time was because it is for the entire county, it's for all school districts in the county, but in point of fact, almost all of the students, all the time, are ours. And even when they're not all ours, we're in the upper 90%, 95, 96, 97, 99% are our students. If you ask the question, would we continue this program in the absence of the Community Education Fund even existing, the answer is absolutely yes. So as a result of that, under the new test, under the new law, that would no longer be allowed in the 80 fund. By moving that 840 plus the 32,000, we now have 872,000 back into the 10 fund, and that's already reduced us to 528,000 of undesigned amounts. Now we have OPEB, this is other post-employee benefits. It can be a very interesting and complicated system, but basically, these are benefits an employee will begin to receive upon retirement that are not part of, excuse me, that are not part of the Wisconsin retirement system. In other words, they're a local, a local benefit. With the reduction in the costs to the district annually, as a result of closing the spigot, if you will, on, on those costs, and allowing them to play out, we anticipate that we'll have some reduction in costs for what we spend on what's called an ARC, Annual Required Contribution. And that also encompasses the other aspect of implicit rate subsidy. But we can't act on this number here, the 300,000, yet, that's an estimate, because we haven't gotten our actuarial study back. We do expect to get that within the next two weeks. Then we should know what that number's going to be. We could see an increase of another 300,000 availability to us, which would essentially take this 528 and make that 828. Now we have another number that's interesting to us, the HRA District Reserve, right in this line here. If you remember, we established a trust fund for our HRA. This is the amount of the money that the district puts in to the HRA Health Insurance Fund that allows us to retain high deductible premiums for our employees. And we are very confident, based on the work that Bill did to analyze this, that we can reduce the amount of contribution annually by 350,000 without negative impact because of the performance of, with the way that whole thing is working, we currently are doing quite well, and we feel very comfortable with that. So making that adjustment in our budget between now and October would put us back up to 878 in terms of having an undesigned balance available. Now we face the reality that we had a, effective July 1st, we had a health insurance premium increase, a low one of only 4%, but that is $400,000. So that reduces our, our available funds. And along with that, the Affordable Care Act has a tax of 2%. So we are taxed another $200,000 to send into the government, and that drops us down to 278,000 of available funds, once we reconcile that out. Now Medicaid billing, this is an estimate, we've had several discussions about that already in Bill's presentation. This is an estimate, we may see an additional 400,000 come into the budget. This is, again, it's tentative, it's an estimate. If that happens, that could take our availability of some undesigned funds back up around 678,000. Now we have a difference in transfer of service. This is probably a pretty good number. When we gave you the preliminary budget, we had one figure that was available to us at that time. Since then, in speaking with Greg, it looks like we used $64,000 in the preliminary budget, he's expecting 219,000, the difference being 155,000 is showing here. So that would jump us back up to 833,000. We had allocated money to textbooks, and after discussing this and knocking it around in Cabinet- in cabinet, we feel pretty confident that we can permanently reduce that allocation that was 700,000 by $200,000, keeping it at 500,000. So this 200,000 would then take us up to about a million of available funds. And the board has already approved, but it was not in the March amount because this doesn't take place until the school starts this year. 3.9 FTE increase. Where at Ben Franklin, we had an increase of 2.7 FTE. At PJ Jacobs, a decrease of 1.2. And at Spash, an increase of 2.4 for a net increase of 3.9. This computes to an increase in staff FTE of teachers of 214,500 as an estimate. And then that would then reduce our undesigned amount to 818,000. And what's interesting to show here is if you look at it, look at how these numbers have fluctuated. We started with 1.4, and we're down to, all the way down to 278, and then back up to 1 and down to 8. So when we say, when I say to you that we put together a budget, the numbers are wrong. You know, that's why all of these things have transpired since that preliminary budget. And these are rather large swings that have taken place. And then we have other issues of the wages, and we haven't factored in all of the groups, et cetera. These are some of the non-union groups. But if we look at, for example, the Carlson-Detman, if we just look at that one group, if we were to include these, anybody can look at this and do the math, if we were to include these, if Tom can get his fingers working right, let's do it this way. If we were to do all of Carlson-Detman and do no wage increases for anybody, we're down to $212,000 of available funds, any kind of cushion, if you will, in the current operating budget. So that takes us down. Some of you have had some questions about fund balance, so just take a brief discussion. I lifted this from a presentation I did with PMA and Baird at one of a state conferences. And I think it's helpful to kind of see what's taking place. Governments usually organize accounting systems in what they call a fund or a fund basis. A fund is a separate set of accounting records segregated for the purpose of carrying on an activity for accountability. And it's used only for those permitted services. So kind of the image of that box is there for a reason. Kind of think of it as a box. In this particular case, it's a general fund. And when Trish was asking about the 27 Fund, 27 Fund has its own box called Special Ed. And in Special Ed, one of the uniquenesses about that fund is it has to balance. It has to come out to zero. So after we get all these federal project expenses and after we get all of the revenue associated with the federal projects, and then we throw in the expenses of all of our local staff, and we subtract all of that out, we're short money. So we have to balance that fund. And so that eight and a half million that's transferred from the 10 Fund to the 27, to that other box to make it zero, to balance it out, is the local share, the local cost of operating special education in our school district. So that transfer is in the general fund, and that box, the expense and the revenue, goes over to the box in Special Ed where it then picks it up in that particular box. So each one of these boxes has what they call a balance sheet. These are types of accounts. And you have assets. These are things we own that belong to the district. Then we have liabilities. Liabilities are things that we owe people. And fund balance, which is the difference between those two, things we own and things we owe. And it also consists of the budget numbers that we looked at, revenue and expenses. Those are different numbers. All of those make up what's called a balance sheet. A common misunderstanding and misconception is that a fund balance is a cash account. It's not. Remember on this previous slide, assets are things we own and liabilities are things we owe, and the difference is fund balance. Now that may include cash, but it also includes inventory and other things. You question?
Those are current assets?
Current assets, correct. Yes. For example, we might have due from the federal government, or we might have in assets, and we might have investments in assets or an asset, things like that. But that's not cash. Then, so fund balance represents the fund's total assets minus its liabilities. Okay? So how does a fund balance grow or shrink? Well, you have this entity here on the left. This is your prior year funding balance. And then you take the current year budget we've been talking about. We don't know what it's going to do. We budget revenues and we budget expenses, but then things happen throughout the year. And we might be, have extra revenue or less revenue. We might have extra expense or less expense. But depending on whether that increases or decreases, it'll affect the ending fund balance. So we might start with a number here, and when we get at the end, that number might be higher if we wind up with a net increase, or it might be lower if we wind up with a net decrease. Depends on the performance of a given budget in that current year. So that's how they expand or contract. What do we do with the cash portion? The portion of the fund balance that is cash reserve, what do we do with that? We pay our bills on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. And in a year, annual cycle, it looks something like this. We start out, these are three different years, just to give you flavor, and it's fairly typical in terms of the dynamics of it. We started out in July, and we move along, and we draw down on the money that we have in July, August, September. We don't get any state aid, or our largest state aid comes at the end of November, actually the first Monday in December, just to be correct. And that's 25%. Then in January and February, we start to get some tax money in, and then it drops off again throughout the spring till we're very low. Backing up, I should have pointed out that this spot right here at the end of November, depending on the fund balance, we're close to being out of money. With these last year or two, we've got some extra now, but we'll probably have to use some of that up for projects. But that's a real critical point in the year. We also drop down at this point in the year and then get again some taxes. Here's another way to show that on a linear form. It's interesting to note, in the eight months, starting here in July, in eight months, only 40% of equalization aid is received. In 11 months, only 65% of equalization aid is received. So when we talk cash flow, imagine operating a business where one of your major sources of revenue, you have to operate for 11 months before you get 65% of your revenue. And in that last month, we get the 35% in June. So that's what you use the cash portion of your fund balance for, to meet those obligations as the cash is drawn down to pay salaries and benefits and the heat and light bills and transportation and all the other things that make up the budget. So it's important to realize that a fund balance changes daily. As money comes in, the fund balance increases. As expenditures are made, it decreases. And because a school's district's fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th, the fund balance is reported and compared to other years, and to other school districts for that matter, as of June 30th. So when you say, what is your fund balance, you really have to grab it at that point in time, the audited balance as of June 30th. So one of the most common questions that we do hear regarding a fund balance is how large should it be? Well, really, a good answer is an amount sufficient to avoid short-term borrowing for cash flow, because you have to pay money to borrow money, and that's money you don't have for kids then. And an amount that allows the district to set aside sufficient assets to realize their long-range goals. And in this district, that amount runs between 20, 25%. Question over here, Trish?
Can I just ask a question? On the slide before, you said--
Could you get closer to the microphone for me, please?
Yes, I can. On the previous slide--
Previous slide, okay.
Yeah. You had said that normally the best time to analyze a fund balance is June 30th. And if you go back a couple of slides, isn't, yeah, isn't June 30th one of the lower points? Or that's where it's starting to rise up?
It's starting to rise, but that's immaterial. The point is that our fiscal year runs from July to June.
Sure.
So the end of the fiscal year is June 30th. That's when our audit is done, effective, the balance is all effective June 30th. So when we measure, we measure from June 30th to June 30th, and we do that statewide. You know, all districts can then be compared at one point in time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Oh, absolutely. No problem.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Well, anyway, and although you need to realize that a fund balance is not, in emphasis, capital letters and an underline, a savings account, because it's comprised of much more than that, but the cash portion of the fund balance, like one savings account, once the cash is expended from that fund, it's difficult, and it's often a very lengthy process to try to rebuild that balance. When it's gone, it's gone. So there are occasions when it's appropriate and fine to utilize fund balance, and those are almost exclusively reserved for one-time types of things, because fund balance can't be used to sustain payments. And put it in a comparison to your own lives, you can't go to your savings account, for example, and continue to pay a house payment out of your savings account because eventually it's going to be gone, and there won't be any money, and you can't make the house payment, and you don't have a savings account either. So that's the way that goes. So anyway, returning then to the other presentation, that is basically how this works. And if you go along and put in some other numbers, as I mentioned, if we put in, if we were to put in numbers here and say, for example, we're going to do that, Carlson-Detman, you're down to 217. If you go up here and you say, okay, we're going to do a 1% or 1 and 1/2, pick a number, I'll just say 1 and 1/2% here, you hit that, that'll be the expense. Then we're down to 114 in that example, although we don't have all the groups in here. If we did 1.5, we're down to 13,000. So that's kind of the dynamics of how this sheet works. So you went to 2%. We don't have enough money. Are there any questions?
Just, I guess, real quick, again, what is the Fund 80?
Okay, Fund 80, good question. Fund 80 is the Community Service Fund. And the fund is designed to record, be a little box where we record all of the activities associated with groups that utilize our facility, who are not school-related, they're not school activities, they're outside groups of people. You don't have to have a Fund 80, first of all. I want to make that clear, you don't have to have one. It's a way to segregate those costs if you have programs. Some districts have a very extensive community service program. They operate buildings. They operate programs. They offer programs similar to what the Y does or something, where you might have computer classes for adults. You might have Zumba or weightlifting or all kinds of things, Spanish for this community-based. That would run out of a community service, and you charge fees, et cetera. It would all be balanced in that community service fund. It carries its own levy, et cetera. Under the new law, now they're much more strict about what can be placed into that fund.
What's our current fund balance?
Yes, sir. Pardon?
What's our current fund balance?
You know, I didn't look at that up before I came in. Bill, do you have that book with you, the current fund balance?
I do not. So I believe it's right on 25 million. I don't--
It's about 28%, maybe a little higher, because we have some extra funds in there. Now we have that $1 million from the Medicaid that we haven't spent yet. We're still holding it. So it actually might even be in closer to the 30% or low 30s. So it will be coming down without a doubt in the next few years. But other questions?
With regards to the fund balance, on the tutorial that, and I'll use the microphone, sorry, on the tutorial that you have online--
Yeah.
You say, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's 23.3% is something like that, is the best fund balance percentage to keep? And I don't remember where that percentage came from.
Well, yeah, and I don't say it's the best, because there's no place where I say an absolute, other than the best thing is what I said there, an amount sufficient to cover so you don't have to short-term borrow and also something to meet your emergencies or long-range plans, so that you don't get into a situation where an emergency comes up and you have to make an expenditure, and then you don't have enough to meet your cash flow needs. So I think that 23.6, I think that number you're quoting, if I remember correctly, was an average of what districts about our size have at the time we did that tutorial. And I got that, I believe, from PMA when they did an analysis of other districts our size, where were their cash flows, where were their fund balances, et cetera. And that was a number about where they were writing. At the time, we were at about 26% or 28%, and I believe our policy says we should maintain 25% a minimum.
Okay.
25.
But right now, you're saying that we're probably closer to 30?
Yeah, we might be at 30 or maybe even 31 of revenue, because we are holding some funds. Last year, you did it as an assigned fund balance. You had money set aside for the Life Skills Center, et cetera, in what they call the signed fund balance, where it's segregated out of the unassigned. And when that, June 30th came along, that all gets closed back into the unassigned. It doesn't hurt anything. It just is not as clear. But, so that's in there too. So we're probably stated a little higher than what we will normally carry, but because we've got those additional funds in there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Trish?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then if we can please take four or five minutes, we'll go into, oh, do we need a motion to go into close, or is it just part of what we're doing?
Can I just make one quick comment?
Of course.
I just want to thank the administrators for putting this together. I can see this was a lot of work to put this together, and I'm the one that actually asked for it. And it's really helpful for me to have a better understanding of how much money we have to spend, how much money we're required to spend, and how much money we have as, I don't want to say discretionary, but--
Undesignated.
Undesignated, thank you. So thank you for putting this together. I really do appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I also would appreciate if I could get a copy of the slide, Tom, that had the fund balance.
Actually, that whole PowerPoint--
That PowerPoint, if we could get a copy of your PowerPoint, including the slide that has the fund balance and how we spend through the year, that would help.
Thank you. Give that to all the board members?
Yep. Along with the other two requests.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, then I need a motion to go into closed session, please.
I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we go into closed session, Reed asks to speak.
You know, when you started this meeting tonight, there was some discussion about taking out the closed session and then taking out part of it. And I still believe, I don't know what you, it went around so many times, I don't know what you really came up with, but this part here, you know, about the closed session, specifically-- But this part here, you know, about the closed session, specifically to redo and employment of this superintendent, that is the same way it was put last week, okay? Now, what I heard at this meeting was an admission that there was a vote. Whether or not it was a straw vote or whatever, there was an agreement to do something. And the agreement was not to do something. Now, the fact that it's not recorded doesn't now make it that it didn't happen, okay? It happened. So what I am concerned about, a reconsideration tonight on the same issue, that issue has been taken care of. You decided not to take, looking at you, we could certainly want to admit that, you claimed that you guys decided not to do something. And regarding your comment that, often people do that, you go into closed session, you talk about things, true. But I boned up on the open meeting law and only, you can only vote on a matter if it's integral to voting, if it's necessary to vote in closed session. You just don't get to vote in closed session because it makes life easier for you. Public doesn't know then how you voted. For someone to claim that voting on the issue of whether or not to entertain 26 people's desire for you guys to somehow reconsider, to ask your superintendent to reconsider his irrevocable decision to resign is not a, first of all, I don't think that even belonged, that should have even gone into closed session. But voting on the matter certainly was an integral to that part. So voting on the issue, you shouldn't have done it. You did it wrong, but you did it, okay? So it's done. So somebody's got to admit that it's done. So I am concerned that you got this on there again tonight and you can't reconsider it because there's a process for reconsideration, okay? Well, but I believe there are some here, there are, I know there are some here that would like to keep this thing going for several reasons. It complicates the fact of having an honest discussion over the office superintendent because as long as this issue is still out there, you can't have that. So that can effectively be killed by the people who want to continue, you know, kill that process. So that's got to be taken care of. So somebody somehow has got to admit that that issue is done, okay? And at the same time, you know, I mean, who's going to, who's going to take you guys to court, Greg? Like, you know, if I could, I would, you know? But you guys, I believe, have done it wrong and you've done this all the time. If you read what the open law is, you should rarely go into closed session and only for the portion that needs to be closed. You go in all the time for the whole length of the time. We've got attorneys that claim their attorneys on here. I don't know what they did and pull over, if that's how they did things and pull over, they went into closed session all the time? I don't know. But you're not supposed to do that because you're supposed to have transparency, this is all about public, you don't like hearing it from me, too bad. But if you guys would operate this thing on an honest, transparent process, I wouldn't have to be up here because that's all the public has to know that this thing is being done honestly. And the biggest question, I'll guarantee you, is right now, is what's going to happen with the superintendent of schools? There's all this budget stuff, that's all great. I don't believe, mostly understand what's going on anyhow. Thank goodness we've got people that do. But the one issue that everyone does understand is what's going to happen with the superintendent A lot of people aren't looking me, looking at me. Got to just run my time out until somebody says. So let's speak, let's take that offer there, this decision has been made.
Need a motion to go into closed session, please? I need to read the statute. 1985, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, specifically contract negotiating, negotiations regarding AFSMI, teachers, SPEA and SPAEA, and specifically the review and employment of the superintendent. Need a motion to go into close, please?
I'll move. I did already.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Paxton?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
I'd prefer to do this in open session, but no, it can be done in closed session. No.
Ms. Totten?
Reed is absolutely correct. We should be doing more in open. I would prefer to do that. I prefer to be open and honest with the public. And the way we do things is really your answer, Reed, as to whether we want to be open and honest or not. But I know that it can be in closed session and my answer is no.
Okay, we're in closed session, six votes.
Prior to us leaving, going into closed session, I want to ask Lisa if you are planning on recusing yourself.
I always do for the teacher section.
And will you be leaving the room?
No.
Okay. I will state for the record that I believe that recusal means that you become as though you are not a member of the board, you're a member of the public, subject to all that the public is entitled to. If we're in open session, as just occurred, and recusal happens, the public is invited to remain in the room and does so. And I believe, as I did with the sentry board, when I, I mean, when I had to make the decision about that, recused myself and remained in the room. Closed session, public is not allowed in the room. And I believe that as a matter of good governance, as a matter of being clear to prevent any appearance of impropriety, that it would be helpful and appropriate to not remain in closed session. I understand that it's your choice. I believe it will have an inhibitory impact potentially on my ability to participate in full and closed session. I do understand it's your choice, but in the event you choose to remain in there, I believe we need to state for the record that you are planning on recusing yourself but remaining in the room. Because there is potential legal liability to the district in the event that whatever action that happens within that closed session is determined to mean that you had participated within the meaning of the statute. Then we are all, as board members, as a board and as a school district, subject to potential liability as well as subject to the reality that whatever decisions that were made are rendered moot because of the violation. So it's not personal, it's a matter of business, it's a matter of organization, it's a matter of process. I have never, in all of my involvements with government, had somebody recuse themselves when it's involving a closed session and remain in the room. I think it's inappropriate and I think it shows an appearance of impropriety. There's the potential, there's the potential that there will be a concern raised in the public that you've openly admitted you have a conflict of interest, but you are going in the room unlike any other member of the public.
We are in closed session. Five minutes, please.